Greetings and welcome to the Socco City Council meeting on Monday, June 15th, 2020. Call the meeting to order at 6:31 PM. Under recognition of members present, item two, all councilors are present and also as the city administrator. Moving on to item three, like to invite everyone to join the council in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please refer your eyes to city administrator Canrath's picture as he has a flag in the background. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Moving on to item number four, under general, there are no general comments for tonight's meeting. Moving on to item five, committee correspondence to council. Are there any committee correspondents at this time? Seeing no hands raised and no councilor seeking recognition. Moving on to item six, public comment. City Administrator Canrath, have you received any public comment for tonight's meeting?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have one piece of public comment if I read onto the record now.
Thank you.
This comes, this is emailed in from Kathleen DeJajo. She writes, dear ladies and gentlemen, as representatives of the neighborhood of 60 Bevieu Road, we have over the past year and a half been subjected to blasting, controlled burns, dust, and heavy equipment in use on weekends. Why? Because the commercial developer, with the assistance of our code enforcement officer and legal representative, decided that Socco zoning laws did not apply and wanted to overdevelop a small piece of land in the middle of our neighborhood. All this work was done without applying to the planning board and after pulling a permit to build one home on the land. Not surprised the code enforcement or our legal representative, but a shock to the neighbors, the true project plan submitted for approval to the planning board was for a condominium development in an R1A zone. Fortunately, the planning board with very little support from the Socco Planning Department, code enforcement officer, or legal representative deemed that this was not the proper use of this land and denied the project. We, as neighbors, had successfully argued that the use was for, was an expansion, not only in scope, but in size and usage. What happened next is very unsettling. The planning department does not support the denial and gets in a huddle at the end of the planning board meeting with the developer and surprise, he is now taking this to court. We would like to remind the city council that Socco does have laws that are supposed to be applied to all. First is that our way zone is low density, single-family residential, only requiring at least 20,000 square feet of land to build a home if there is city water and sewage, which Bevieu has both. With those parameters, two homes can be built on this piece of land. Second, the landing question was grandfather to seasonal cottages. The laws on grandfather property says that if these properties are not used for the grandfather purpose for more than 12 months, the grandfather view ceases to exist. Since the last time there was any water on this property was November 1st, 2018, the 12 months has long since ended. Even if the developer wanted to argue that he was in the process of updating, that has an 18-month expiration date, which has also passed. We, the neighbors, worked very hard to make this successful argument to the planning board and do not appreciate the city employees of Socco working so hard to assist a developer in circumventing our laws while not paying taxes on the landing question. As of last week, almost $3,000 in back taxes were owed on this land. We have asked to meet with the city's legal representatives to ensure our concerns were heard, and so far, this has not happened. Now we get an email at almost 10:00 PM on Sunday night that the city is close to negotiating a settlement with the developer. The city should not be negotiating anything but two homes built on this property conforming to all setbacks and restrictions. Kathleen DeJajo.
Thank you, city administrator Canrath. At this time, is there anyone on the Zoom platform that would like to speak before the council? If so, use the raise hand feature of the Zoom platform and you'll be unmuted to speak to the council. Again, if there's anyone who would like to be, speak before the council, please use the raise hand feature and you'll be unmuted to speak to the council. Okay, I've unmuted. DeJajo, as identified by the D and the name DeJajo on the Zoom platform, if you can just state your name and your address for the record and then speak directly to the council.
Kathleen DeJajo, and my address is 15 Plymouth Drive. And all I want to make sure is that the public comment that I sent earlier was received.
It was received and just read into the record by the city administrator.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. I was trying to get into the.
No worries.
Okay, so as long as you, as long as you've seen it, heard it, and if anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to answer it. That's all I needed.
Okay, thank you, Kathleen. If there's anyone else who would like to speak before the council in the public comments section, please use the raise hand feature of the Zoom platform and you'll be unmuted to speak to the council. Seeing no hands raised and no one seeking recognition. Moving on to item seven, approval of the minutes for June 1st, 2020. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Is there a second?
So.
Any omissions or discussion on the minutes for June 1st, 2020? I see no councilors raise hands and no one, no councilor seeking recognition. Roll call vote, Council Archer.
Hi.
Councilor Purdy. Councilor Gunn.
Yes.
Councilor Copeland.
No.
Councilor Menthorn. Councilor McPhail. Councilor Johnston.
No.
Motion passes 5-2. Moving on to item eight, we have four items on the consent agenda. Item E, notice of election for the special general election and budget validation referendum for election on July 14th, 2020. Item B, to reappoint Tom Clack to the Conservation Commission. C, reappoint George Starr to the Zoning Board of Appeals. And D, appoint Craig Shane to the Conservation Commission. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Motion by Councilor Menthorn, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Copeland. Any discussion, Councilor Copeland?
Well, I just wanted to say that I'm the council liaison with the Conservation Commission, and I'm thrilled that Tom Clack has taken time out of his life to be a part of that committee. He is wonderful and provides a lot of guidance and help and on-the-ground support. And we hopefully, I think the law vote amendment, I hopefully Craig Shane will also be nominated. I know that the commission voted on it, and so I'm pleased to support that.
Thank you, Councilor Copeland. Any, any further omissions, questions, items to be pulled? Seeing seeing no councilor seeking recognition and no hands raised, move for a roll call vote, Council Archer. And Councilor Purdy. Councilor Gunn.
Yes.
Councilor Copeland.
Yes.
Councilor Menthorn.
Yes.
Councilor McPhail.
Yes.
And Council Johnson.
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0. Thank you very much. Moving on to item nine, we have action items. We have item A, a public hearing. Renewal application for special entertainment permit for run-of-the-mill. We have Council Johnson.
Island Brewing LLC, doing business as a run-of-the-mill, has applied for renewal, their special entertainment permit. The permit will be concurrent with the establishment's liquor license. The applicant has paid all applicable permit fees and the clerk has properly advertised public hearing in accordance with the city, with the Socco City Code, Chapter 93, Entertainment, Section 93-2. I move to open the public hearing.
Then a motion made by Councilor Johnston to open the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Menthorn. Any discussion? Seeing no hands raised, no councilor seeking recognition, roll call vote to open the public hearing. Council Archer. Council Purdy. Councilor Gunn. Councilor Copeland.
Yes.
Councilor Menthorn.
Yes.
Council McPhail.
Yes.
Council Johnson.
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0. The public hearing is now open. If there's anyone who would like to speak before the council on the renewal application for special entertainment permit, run-of-the-mill, please use the raise hand feature of the Zoom platform and you'll be unmuted to speak to the council. Again, if there's anyone who would like to speak before the council on the renewal application for special entertainment permit, run-of-the-mill, please use the raise hand feature of the Zoom platform and you'll be unmuted to speak to the council. Seeing no hands raised and no one seeking recognition, Council Johnson.
We, not me?
Yes, Council Johnson. Got to close the public hearing. Councilor Johnson, are you having some technical issues? Councilor Johnston cannot hear us at this moment. Councilor Johnston, can you hear us? Councilor Johnston has left. So we'll give him a moment to return. So a public hearing is still open if anyone who would like to speak to the council on the renewal application for special entertainment permit, run-of-the-mill. If so, please use the raise hand feature of the Zoom platform and you'll be unmuted to speak. Councilor Johnson, can you hear us now?
I can hear you, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, yes.
All right.
Do you have a motion?
I moved to close, I moved to close the public hearing and be it ordered that the city council grant the renewal application submitted by Island Brewing LLC, doing business as a run-of-the-mill for a special entertainment permit to be concurrent with the establishment's current liquor license. I move to approve the order.
Second. Motion been made by Council Johnson, second by Council Menthorn. Any discussion? Council Archer.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Obviously not, we don't usually discuss here, but after looking at the form, two items have popped up. One, I'll be voting on this with the assumption that it says no dancing, but it's hard to read. That brings in the second part, is that maybe this should be now printed in the future. I do not want us to have to have a discussion in the future of legalities of how we voted, if this was to be contested by someone. Not necessarily this item, it's just that it was hard to read. I think it says no dancing, but I would not want to have to spend our time fighting it in the future. So I think requests like this should be printed. But I mean, I'm taking that as no dancing.
Thank you, Council Archer. Any other discussion at all? I, I see it as no dancing as well, Council Archer, just.
Just clarity, and again, we don't want to deal with legalities in the future over, no, that said something else. Well, I read it this. I think if it's printed in the future, it'll be helpful, but I have nothing against this document by person. So we're good. I'll be voting yes.
Okay. Any further discussion on this item? Seeing no further discussion. Roll call vote, Council Archer.
Hi.
Councilor Purdy.
Yes.
Councilor Gunn. Councilor Copeland.
Yes.
Councilor Menthorn. Council McPhail.
Yes.
And Council Johnson.
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0. Thank you very much. Moving on to item B, second and final reading for the adoption of revised MMA General Assistance Ordinance, Council Archer.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. City of Socco currently uses the General Assistance Ordinance dated September 2013, which was provided by the Maine Municipal Association, MMA. MMA currently has a new GA ordinance dated August 2019, which contains revisions and updates to new law. The city of Socco hereby ordains to repeal the MMA General Assistance Ordinance dated September 2013 and to adopt the MMA General Assistance Ordinance dated August 2019. I move to approve the order.
Thank you, Council Archer. Is there a second? Council Johnson. Any discussion? I see no dis, no raised hands and no council seeking recognition. Roll call vote, Council Archer. Council Purdy. Councilor Gunn.
Yes.
Councilor Copeland.
Yes.
Councilor Menthorn. Council McPhail.
Yes.
And Council Johnson.
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0. Thank you, Council Johnson, for dealing with those audiovisual issues that are going on. With that, we are moving on to item 10. We have new business. I believe that we're going to get a presentation on item A, which is MS4 permit overview, and I believe we'll be getting that believe we'll be getting that from city engineer Joe LaVaria. Andrew, if you could promote Joe, please. As far as the permit, please stop by city hall councilors so that you can sign the permit, the run-of-the-mill permit at your leisure. That needs to be signed.
So thanks for having me tonight. I'm going to hopefully get to where we share the screen here, so bear with me.
City engineer Joe LaVaria, thank you very much for joining us and welcome.
Thank you for having me. So are you.
The screen is being shared.
Okay, perfect.
You may want to go to the slide of, I think you're already doing that, so I don't want to interfere.
So for, tonight's presentation is about the MS4 permit. Some of the councilors that are, have been on for more than a year will probably remember this. I think I was in front of the council maybe two years ago with a similar kind of presentation, and you may ask me why, why are you doing this again? Well, this is actual, a permit requirement for us to do this on an annual basis. We don't necessarily do the council every time. We do share with other boards or committees in the city. What we are asked to do specifically is when we have new members on the council, so this year, I believe we have three. So that's one of the times that we're asked to specifically go back to the council and kind of have this overview. So the MS4 permit is, I don't know how many of you know much about the MS4 permit or what its requirements are. It's stormwater related is, is its purpose, but it does not apply to every community in, in, well, throughout the United States or in Maine. You have to be around high population centers. So the big cities like Boston, New York, they were in the phase one round of the MS4 permit, and then as you got to smaller communities, so essentially around the Portland area is a cell of towns that have populations relatively that raised us to being subject to the MS4 permit. So around the Portland area, there are 11 communities that are subject to us. If you think about your neighbors, Scarborough, South Portland, certainly Portland, Gorham, Wyndham, Bitterford, that's, and there are others, but that's the kind of media grouping around us that are part of it. So the MS4 permit is a, it's a general permit, like most general permits, they run for five years. So if you do your math, you're going to say, well, you're a liar. The, the last permit was, it was issued in 2013. So one would have thought, well, we should have had a new permit in 2018, and you would be correct. We have been negotiating this next permit for three years. So you can imagine there's a fair lot of angst about these permits, what the requirements are that each community has to deal with to meet them. I mean, it's been a back and forth now for, for three years. So essentially, the permit that was in place in 2013 was, was administrated, will be extended for, for three years. The next permit, the draft is actually supposed to come out, will be the ninth draft of that was coming out later this week. And all intentions are that it'll be issued to start in 2001. Or 2020, 21. So each time they issue the new permit, it, it tends to come with new requirements. And so that's what's been going on for three years is back and forth on what the next requirements will be or what gets added to the current permit. So again, it's, the MS4 permits about stormwater. So again, stormwater, most people think of, you know, rain, certainly for sure. It's also things like snow and snow melt. And particularly the issue for the urbanized areas is what gets captured in this stormwater as it melts or as it runs across the land and either enters a storm drain system or sheet flows across the ground and eventually enters a natural drainage system and the impacts that the urbanized areas have on the water quality of those receiving waters. So most urbanized areas, there's are impairments on streams. And if you get to a significant enough of impairment, then you do become what is called an impaired stream. And in Socco, the impaired stream that we have is Goose Fairbrook. So most people may be familiar with the Goose Fairbrook Watershed Program that's been going on. That's kind of a, kind of a parallel initiative, but essentially what the MS4 is aimed at doing is trying to minimize the number of impaired streams by handling how stormwater is treated on properties and how it's received and discharged to the city. So again, some of the common pollutants that can enter our system are sand, salt, sediment. So again, if you look at the top picture in there, you'll see lots of track out from something, you know, construction site. But again, you can imagine if rain was to hit exposed soil, it's going to flow into the, to the street water or the storm drain system itself. Coming off of lawns, people have pesticides applied or they're fertilizers. So those are nutrients that get discharged that can get washed off. Certainly, we have the little furry critter that's next door, the pet waste. Again, people that, you know, take the dogs out, but maybe don't pick up after them, that's an issue for us. Salt in the winter, wintertime, that's pretty tough to deal with, but that's another, another common pollutant. And then there's trash and debris that, you know, cigarette butts and whatever, Coca-Cola cans and all the debris that, that can get into the stream. So again, I already kind of touched on this a little bit, the regulated municipalities that are subject to this. In the Portland area, this map kind of shows all of them, so it stretches up to Freeport, to the north around the Portland area, out to Gorham, Wyndham, and then down as far as Bitterford and everyone in between. There's also another cluster in the south around York, and there's another one around Auburn, Lewiston, and then there's one up around the Bangor area. So each one of these communities is subject to the MS4. We have heightened restrictions or regulations that we have to follow on tracking things and how we clean things up. What some of our weaknesses are for how development's done and how stormwater is handled on those. And all those things generally, as you can imagine, result in higher costs to the municipalities. And so again, at the bottom of that screen, I just wanted you to see that currently Socco spans, as part of the DPW budget, we spend about $250,000 annually on stormwater maintenance and compliance. So that can range from increased street sweeping. Some of them are really good because people like clean streets. So you know, street sweeping is one of them, catch basin cleaning is some of them. But it also has to do with some of the monitoring and tracking that we do at outfalls, testing, sampling, which if you weren't subject to, you might ordinarily not do. So the MS4 permit itself consists of six minimum controls. So that's what the MCMs are. And I can touch upon these or answer questions if you want, but I'll just hit the highlights for them. The MCM1 is public education outreach. In a way, that's what tonight is about. It's, it's to try to reach out to the council, make them aware of what these requirements are and that the city is subject to them. But it also is to educate some of the, just general public. And that gets done in a number of different ways. We do have events that will be at that will speak about stormwater. We do some of it through the Goose Fairbrook Restoration Committee. And then the, the other group that the Portland communities are part of is called Izzywig, which is the inter-local stormwater working group, and we sponsor events. And one is the Urban Runoff, which some of you maybe have gone to in the past. It's usually earlier in the spring. Actually, this year, because of COVID, it's going to happen this weekend. So it's a, it's a 5K race. And after that, there's a chance to, for the people to hear and see stuff about stormwater and educate them about their impacts. MCM2 is public participation. And again, for us, that's really participating in that's inter-local stormwater group. MCM3 is illicit discharge detection and elimination. So this is where the rubber starts to hit the road for most communities. When we talk about sampling stormwater, so there are times that we do have to, to go to each one of our stormwater outfalls. We have to see whether they're discharging anything or not. If they are, we take samples. If we have elevated pollutants, then we have to start figuring out where those sources are coming from. And, and as you can imagine, if it's a fairly small storm drain system, sometimes that's relatively easy to locate. If it's a fairly large storm drain system in Socco, while it, you know, it's not the biggest city in the world, we do have some storm drains that are, you know, do have some extensive stretches to it, and you can try to find a source can take a while to, to do. MCM4 is construction site runoff control. So again, on, back in that earlier picture, we talked about, you know, proper erosion control measures around sites. Or you see contractors that will have track out from construction vehicles that are coming out of an active construction site out onto the public road. Those are the type of things that happen during construction site runoff control, MCM4. So the city does have inspectors that go out and review for site plan and subdivisions and codes handles the, the single family or the duplex individual building lots. And if they need assistance, they certainly draw from Public Works or from planning on that. MC and, MCM5 is post-construction stormwater management. So this is after a project is built, and if they have long-term or stormwater BMP measures, those would be like stormwater treatment ponds or filter basins or whatnot. They are required to maintain those and inspect those annually and to report to the city annually with how they are working or what measures they needed to do to bring them up to speed. So again, that's some more tracking that we have to do. We have to follow each one of those projects. We have to make contact with those property owners and try, you know, basically get those reports coming. Those are due to the city on every July 15th. So that effort on my department starts about two months ago with letters of contacting them, making aware of that, and then follow-ups to try to get those annual reports in. And that's one of the things we have to report on to the state annually is how everyone else is doing. Sorry, didn't mean to switch it. MCM6 is good housekeeping and pollution prevention. That's really the city's side of, so Public Works, that's us cleaning streets, that's us cleaning catch basins. But it's also police and fire when there's an accident on the road and there's a car that leaks antifreeze. It's, what do we do to respond to clean that up? Some of those are pretty routine. They, they, those two departments do a really good job of taking care of that themselves. If they need assistance from Public Works, we certainly are there. And if it's a large enough spill, that's when we'll contact Maine DP to come in with, there has this folks to, to clean things up. And we do have those from time to time if it's a larger accident. But there's also requirements for just any public facility for how to operate with spills in the facility. Or, and again, like city hall's pretty limited because. Or and again, if like city hall's pretty limited because it's really cleaning supplies, that sort of stuff. If you're talking about police and fire, they start handling some other things that need to be, uh, prevented from getting into the storm water system. So all this effort that gets done is all about record keeping and reporting. Um, and I think the way DP said it to us in the past is if you don't, um, have a good documentation of, of what you've done, then as far as they're concerned, you didn't do it. So, um, we have to keep a lot of efforts either in our GIS. Some of it's on paper, some of it's in spreadsheet form, some of it's in our work order. Each department has a little bit different way of how they do things. We use iWorks to track a lot of things now as well. But essentially all, all our catch basins, cleaning streets that are swept, all those things have to be documented. And then at the end, we have to, uh, report back to the state on how we're doing. So again, annually, um, we have meetings with DP to, uh, in our inter, inter stormwater Izzywood group to just talk about how we're doing and how people are doing. But once per permit cycle, communities are promised that they will be audited. It's not a, a process you really look forward to. It's kind of like going to the IRS to be audited, but it does happen. Uh, Saco was last audited in November of two thousand and fifteen. So if you can, if you remember that that permit cycle was two thousand and thirteen, it should have ended in two thousand and eighteen. So we were kind of in the middle of that last five-year permit cycle. Uh, this year, the next permit again, but is due to come out. It'll take effect in two thousand and twenty-one. So it'll, you know, it should run through to two thousand and twenty-six. I'm sure we'll be, um, pushing to two thousand and twenty-six when that one comes around for the next permit cycle. But again, Saco should be audited again. During the last audit, um, Saco did quite well. We had a few things that we were asked to, you know, do a better job at, but for the most part, uh, Saco's audit was pretty clean. There's a few surrounding communities that weren't as fortunate, uh, but I think everyone is, it's a learning lesson. And I think every group really works hard to try to do the right thing. So the goal is for the communities is to try to be obviously compliant as opposed to non-compliant. There are fines that can be levied against towns that, um, municipalities that, that don't meet the obligations of the MS four. So our, our goal is to, while you look at it and say, well, you're just spending two hundred and fifty thousand a year on storm water, some of those things we would do anyway. But there are, there is definitely an increased cost of that, but the goal here is to not, uh, found to be in non-compliance and be subject to what you see at the bottom, the two, the twenty-five thousand dollars per day, uh, per violation. So I mean, at this point, I don't know. Um, I'm not aware of any towns. I think Gore may have been cited with a, with a monetary penalty, but I'm not sure at the end it was assessed. They may have, uh, been able to work out a negotiation. So the currently the city has, um, the area that's regulated under the MS four is pretty much the downtown urbanized area out towards the ocean. And it includes the, uh, Goose Fairbrook watershed, which again starts at the Heath and captures, uh, the majority of the industrial park. Certainly gets the area out by Hanafords and, uh, that stretch to Route one. So as you can, you know, as you can sense, it's, it's pretty much the downtown core of the city is in the MS four. The area that's not really in the MS four right now is the area that's in North Saco. The more rural sections of the city are not in portions of Route one. Uh, believe it or not, as you get out to its Cascade Road, before you get into Scarborough, there's a little area in there that is also not technically subjected to the MS four. We treat everything the same in Saco. So essentially whether we're in the MS four or not, it doesn't change how we approach the storm drain systems or how we treat, um, development in town. We look at them all as if they would be considered to be in the MS four. Within the MS four though, we, we currently have over two hundred and fifty storm water outfalls. So, oh, again, we do not get to every one of those annually. We, we target to get to about twenty-five percent of those, uh, each year for inspections. The permit requires twenty percent of the outfalls to be inspected. So again, we're, we're doing better than what we're required to do. We continually are updating the GIS mapping to, you know, when infrastructure gets added to the system. We have both sewer and storm drain for sure on there, but the, for the MS four, what they're really interested in is your storm drain system, uh, being updated. Uh, and then again, uh, as we have issues either at DPW or at on the roadway system with spills, it's, it's, uh, handling spills or other issues that are illicit discharges to our MS four. And that's where we start tracking, uh, taking additional samples, trying to identify with the pollutant sources. And then ideally try to figure out who the discharger is. Um, and usually every year we have, uh, two or three of those that we have to track down is what we've kind of historically, uh, found. Just to give you a little update on Goose Fairbrook watershed. Uh, again, that is our priority watershed within the MS four because it is an urban impaired stream. Uh, again, some of you may remember that there was water management plan that was completed for that in, in May of two thousand and sixteen. And again, this just give you a little bit of highlights so that you know it outlined. So if you think about the, what the MS four is really trying to do, it would really like to protect all watersheds so that they don't become impaired. Uh, Goose Fairbrook is impaired. It's impaired for a few things. Uh, some of them are legacy, heavy metal issues that are associated with the Saco Steel Site and with General Dynamics. Um, but there's also, uh, just urbanization runoff from streets. Those are also what impairs Goose Fairbrook. When the watershed management plan was put together, it outlined, uh, basically a fifteen-year restoration plan, included over a hundred and thirty projects to be done with an estimated cost of two point three million dollars. So again, you can see that restoring a stream is not a cheap proposition. Uh, so to try to keep them from becoming that, uh, is, is certainly the goal. And, uh, since two thousand and sixteen, the city has participated in, um, where, where rarely, we just actually applied for a third phase of the grant. But the first phase was issued to the city. Uh, it started in two thousand and sixteen and ran through two thousand and eighteen. And during that time, we completed, uh, twelve retrofit projects at a cost of about two hundred and sixteen thousand dollars. That was total cost, not just the, uh, the city. The city was a portion of that cost and then, you know, this grant money as you, that was part of it. But again, we, we've done some pretty good work in the last couple of years in Goose Fairbrook. So that is the last slide. I guess I thought there was one more after that one, but I guess that is the end. So I would be happy to answer any of your questions if I can.
Thank you, Joe. Are there any questions, uh, from the council or city engineer of area?
Thank you, Mayor. Joe, uh, slightly off topic. We've been dealing with an issue as you're well aware over on Bradley Street with some medical waste. Have we gotten anywhere on that?
Nope. Uh, well, we have, we, we are aware of one of our, are you talking about some of the syringes that we've been finding?
Is that and some needles and stuff that were in some, from a storm water drain, I believe it was, yeah?
Yeah. So again, that's one of the things we also discovered during one of our outfall inspections. And, uh, so we are aware of it. The police department is aware of it. And so we're, so that's, so that's the type of thing that we start having to track down. It's where they're getting into the system or how they're ending up at our outfall pipe. So that is something that we're actually working on right now.
Great. Great. Thank you.
If anybody knows anything about it, we certainly will take care of it.
We sure would, yeah.
Any further questions from the council? For city engineer Laveria? Uh, seeing no counselors raised hands and no counselor seeking recognition. Thank you, Joe, for your presentation.
Appreciate it.
And have a great evening.
All right. Thank you.
Moving on to item eleven, administrative update. City Administrator Canrath.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, starting with city hall, uh, as you know, city hall is currently open by appointment only. This has been going pretty well, pretty smoothly. Um, there's been a heavy volume, obviously, of people coming in the door, trying to get through a three-month backlog of city business. I just want to again, say to everyone visiting us in the public that we understand the inconvenience of this, but this really is the only way that we can prudently and safely reopen city hall and deal with the large crowds that we have to deal with at this point. So we are now fully booked for the month of June with appointments. We plan on reopening our doors on July first, uh, with possibly some modified hours at beginning, at the end of the day. So we get everyone aligned, uh, through and, and service before, uh, the five P M closing time. So we'll have more on this, um, in the weeks, uh, coming, uh, as we close to that date. And barring any changes, we do anticipate reopening, um, on July first. Uh, our COVID hotline is still up and running, two oh seven, two nine, four, two, four, three, six. Please call with any questions or assistance that you may need, uh, regarding COVID or anything else, uh, during this pandemic time. Uh, Eastern Trail, I had a meeting this past week with representatives of the Eastern Trail, as well as the city of Bitterford, was joining us to discuss the remaining portion of the rail corridor that Pan Am currently owns, needed to link the two, uh, sections of the trail. They have identified some grant money and there is some, some potential interest in doing a feasibility study that would require some matching money from the two cities of Saco and Bitterford. So this is all potential, uh, right now, but I'll have more information on that, uh, coming in the future as, uh, as I know more. A reminder of our election, uh, our election has been moved until July fourteenth, twenty twenty. We're encouraging everyone to take advantage of absentee balloting this year. Um, and to please do your absentee ballot at home rather than coming into city hall, although we do have those facilities, uh, if you would like to do that. Uh, one new addition is we do have a ballot drop box that has been installed, uh, on the Cuts Avenue side of city hall. If you haven't seen it yet, take a look at, at it. It's pretty snazzy. Um, it's bolted to the ground. It cannot go anywhere. At least that's what I'm told. But, uh, that is going to be available for dropping off your ballot, uh, right outside at city hall. You don't need to come into the building, uh, and you don't need to worry about, uh, mailing in the postage either. So that's, that's available outside. Again, the Cuts Avenue side of city hall. Absentee ballots are now available or will be available tomorrow. And please, uh, encouraging everyone to, to remember about this year. Um, I mentioned this last week, but I'll just say it one more time. We do have an IT equipment bid opportunity. The city of Saco is listing bids for networking equipment. Uh, bids must be submitted on the bid response form and a sealed envelope marked Saco Network and will be accepted until two P O on June twenty-fourth. Please contact Joe Lambert and our IT department. If you have any questions or more information or are interested in submitting a bid, he can be reached at seven one zero five zero three zero. Uh, our senior meals program entered its eleventh week this week. Once again, doing about two hundred and fifty meals. Uh, our next, uh, event will be this Friday, June nineteenth, from eleven to twelve thirty. Again, thank you all so much for those, uh, involved and putting this together. We do anticipate continuing the program until, uh, June twenty-sixth. Um, lastly, I'd just like to mention some of my report, but this has been, um, a topic of conversation regarding our council minutes. We do plan, I have worked it out with our city corp and communication staff that's starting, uh, when this meeting tonight, we will include the transcript, the, uh, that's, I believe done by YouTube. This will be an unofficial transcript. It will have to mark as unofficial because there may be some translation that isn't entirely accurate. For example, I guess it continually spells Saco, S O C K O. So we will have to have the understanding that's unofficial transcript, but we will be including that, uh, as an addendum to the minutes. So you can see everything in its entirety of a verbatim transcript. Um, and hopefully that will, um, satisfy some of the concerns regarding our minutes. Um, again, that will be starting with, uh, this evening, this meeting, June fifteenth. Uh, happy to take any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, city administrator Canrath. Are there any questions? Counselor Copeland?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, uh, city administrator Canrath. Um, just a question about the Eastern Trail. So, um, what type of money are we talking about the city having to, um, submit to this? And is it in the budget already? Is that part of the twenty-five thousand joint city money?
No, I, I don't, it's not in the budget, but, and this is all just very preliminary. I don't have more complete information, but they have identified some grant money. It would be a relatively small match from what they were talking about potentially, but there's no hard numbers yet. But something, uh, I think in the range of under, uh, seventy-five thousand dollars. But no, uh, no specific information yet, but I'll keep you updated.
Thank you.
Any other questions for city administrator Canrath? Seeing no hands raised and no counselor seeking recognition. Thank you, city administrator Canrath. Moving on to item twelve, council discussion in common. Uh, any council discussion in common at this time? Seeing no counselor seeking recognition and no hands raised. Move on to, uh, item thirteen. Is, uh, is there a motion for executive session?
Yes, Mayor. Be it ordered to city council enter into executive session pursuant to MRSA title one, chapter thirteen, subchapter one, section four oh five six. Update from attorney on pending legal matters.
Motion's been made by Councilman Mintone. Is there a second? Second by Counselor Johnson. Any discussion? Seeing no hands raised, no counselor seeking recognition, roll call, vote to enter executive session, Counselor. Counselor Purdy? Counselor Gunn? Counselor Mintone? Counselor McHale? Counselor Johnson?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero at seven seventeen to enter executive session. Uh, counselors, please remember to use the Zoom ID that was sent you by city administrator Canrath earlier today.
You're muted, Bill.
Okay, all councilors and city administrator are back, so with that, is there a motion to exit executive session?
Be it ordered the city council exit executive session pursuant to my essay title one, chapter thirteen, subchapter one, section four oh five six, update from attorney on pending legal matters.
Motion's been made by Councilor Minton, is there a second?
Second.
That come by Councilor Purdy. Any discussion? A roll call vote on coming out of executive session, Councilor Archer?
Aye.
Councilor Purdy? Councilor Gunn?
Yes.
Councilor Copeland? Councilor Minton? Councilor McPhail? Councilor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero to exit executive session at eight fourteen P M. On item fourteen, report from executive session, is there any report?
Mister Mayor, there is no report from executive session.
No report, thank you very much. Moving on to item fifteen, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion made by Councilor Minton, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Copeland, any discussion? Seeing no discussion. Roll call vote, Councilor Archer?
Yes.
Councilor Purdy?
Yes.
Councilor Gunn?
Yes.
Councilor Copeland?
Yes.
Councilor Minton? Councilor McPhail?
Yes.
Councilor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero to adjourn the meeting at eight fifteen P M. Thank you very much, everyone, for your cooperation with the technical issues tonight and joining us, and thank you to everyone out there, be safe, and we'll see you soon.